If I could, I'll call. Hello? I'll call our meeting, Lord. I appreciate everyone being here. We have a quorum of our board team. Dr. Kingman is in surgery, so he may be here at some point in time. And our superintendent this evening is taking care of his bride. She, Judy, had a ski accident recently and broke her leg, and she had surgery today in Austin, but she's doing well after following surgery. But he's doing that this evening, so we're excusing him from being here tonight. Our second item on our agenda is our invocation. We're pleased this evening to have Pastor Tony Valdez, and he's at Edmund Boulevard Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. The Scriptures say, "O Lord, that in the past you spoke to the forefathers, you spoke to the prophets, but in these days you speak to us through your Son. You speak to us through your Spirit. You speak to us one-on-one as a friend would with another friend." And God, this evening, I ask upon your presence, upon this place, that you would speak to each person here, that you would speak in a mighty way, not for their own glory, but for the sake of our schools, O Lord, and the children that you have entrusted upon us. God, we know that with this time, that it's just been kind of crazy with sickness and things going on, O Lord, like that. So we pray for a special healing on our teachers as they battle through this sickness. We pray for a special healing on our students as well, O Lord. You're a mighty God who speaks to us directly. And like I ask, O Lord, speak to us this evening. Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Our next item is our pledges. We've got some of our employees' children here this evening. It's a special time for them to be here because they weren't in school today, so we appreciate them coming and being with us. We have Melanie Ramirez from, she's a first grader at Goliad. We have Helen Alombar, who's a fifth grader at Crockett. And we have Julius Campos, and he's a seventh grader at Lee, and they're going to lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
And they're going to stick around while we have a recognition, I believe. They're going to stick around, and yeah.
And we're going to have more pictures, too, so you'll get another opportunity as Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Lehman and members of the board. On behalf of San Angelo Independent School District, it is a privilege to say thank you to Lanny Lehman, Gerard Gallegos, Amy Mizell Flint, Bill Dindal, Max Parker, Art Hernandez, and Dr. Taylor Kingman for planting seeds of success in SAISD. January is School Board Recognition Month, but tonight we also honor you for the work you do all year for our students, staff, and community. Thank you for making sure that every child receives an excellent education. You all are thoughtful, reflective, persistent, curious, responsible, and benevolent. Your leadership reminds us all to be our best in our work with our students and the community. Recently, the City of San Angelo recognized your hard work by proclaiming January School Board Month in San Angelo. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for sharing with the city what we in SAISD can count on every day. Our school board is comprised of leaders who care deeply for our community and who invest time and talent into the work that matters most for our future: educating our children so they will be the next generation of leaders in San Angelo, our state, our nation, and our world. Hopefully, when you entered the boardroom this evening, you saw the slideshow of SAISD students from every corner of the district sending you their thanks and best wishes. At this time, we would like to honor you by presenting you with a certificate acknowledging your service. Also, please accept a reminder of our appreciation for planting the seeds of success in SAISD. So the plants that are in front of you are yours to take home, and thank you for that. Presenting this evening again are Melanie Ramirez, Julius Campos, and Haven Alombar. So when I call your name, please join us on the floor to receive your recognition and to have a group picture made with our student presenters. Mr. Gerard Gallegos. Mr. Max Parker. Thank you all for your commitment and support, and thank you, students, for participating in this recognition tonight. So y'all hold on, we want to take pictures.
I'll just add a few words on behalf of Dr. Detloff and our administrative team, on behalf of our 2,000 employees, over 14,000 students and their parents. Just what a deep sense of gratitude and appreciation we have for your work. And for our audience and our viewership, if you don't know, these are elected officials, and they volunteer their time, a lot of time. That may have been evident when you saw Dr. Kingman in his scrubs right from surgery. They have other lives, they have jobs outside of this work that they do here, and so the time that they spend on our behalf and on our students' behalf is truly, comes from their heart and dedication to our community. And the amazing thing about public education is it is the found work, foundation of society in America. It was founded on that premise of local control, and you truly get that, you truly understand that the work that you do is to benefit our students and our community and what our community gets. And I think that has really coalesced recently in what we heard last week with John Tanner and the work on the community-based accountability system, that that's what we're really here for, is to focus on our San Angelo ISD students. And so the number of hours that you spend answering emails, talking to people on the phone, visiting with people about their needs and their kids' needs, the support that you provide here, the oversight that you provide through funding, through facilities management, through curriculum and instruction, all of that is hard to understand from the public's perspective, but we know that you put in a lot of work doing that, and we are deeply appreciative of that, and the benefit goes to our students. So with that, we greatly appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kimball, and thanks, Ms. Crutchfield. We appreciate that. I'll read our script. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence their cellphones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school So with that said, we'll move forward. For the item I just referred to, if anyone is in the audience wishing to make comments to our board team on any items not on our agenda this evening, please come forward at this time. I see no one wishing to do so, so we'll move to item six, which is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. That's it. We have multiple motions to approve, and we have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the minutes of our December 10, 2018 Finance and Pre-Agenda Workshop Meeting and our December 17, 2018 regular board meeting. Are there questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is a report section of our agenda. Item A is our student enrollment report for the 17th Monday of school, which actually was December 17 of 2018. We received that as part of our Friday fact, so we appreciate that. I think the most recent one showed us it, I think this one shows 70...
92.
92 students, but our most recent one shows 57 students down from last year. So we're pretty much holding the same student enrollment as we had last year. Our next item on reports is an update on academic progress, and Dr. Ritter's going to help us there. Dr. Ritter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman and members of the board. Pleased to just report on our Community-Based Accountability Advisory Council that was held last Wednesday. Several of you were in attendance, along with several people who are administrators and teachers in our audience today, district-level administrators. We were fortunate enough to be led through our advisory council work by John Tanner, who is the CEO of TestSense, and through his work with test systems. He actually designs tests and accountability systems and has been deeply involved in that work over many years. He is working now with our state and TASA, the Texas Association of School Administrators, to help us identify ways that we can incorporate our accountability to be more reflective of the needs of our community in San Angelo ISD. He's working with several districts in the state. Out of the 66 districts that are involved in the Texas Public Accountability Consortium, which San Angelo is involved in, he selected and is going to work with, has invited six districts to work with him in developing community-based accountability in the community. So we're very fortunate and honored that he's invited San Angelo ISD to do this work with his facilitation. So the first step in this was our advisory council meeting, which was Wednesday. And just to have a few slides from the evening, and we had a great turnout. We had about 100 people who were here, including students, teachers, parents, community members, administrators, a great, just a great group of folks who were here with a common goal and interest in improving our systems for our students. Starting right here, he shared with us some quotes throughout it, but I just am highlighting some of the ones that I feel most, best reflect the work that we're doing in our district that we're trying to move forward with. This is a quote from John Dewey saying, "The role of public education is to prepare the next generation to replace us." And that's a pretty powerful statement, and we know that that's the truth. We believe strongly in that. One thing he highlighted for our district was the work that we are already doing in our district. He complimented our district in saying that he felt that we were ahead of the curve, he said, in a lot of the areas of the work that we're doing. In talking about the traditional accountability model, he showed us this slide here. It's kind of hard to see, but it's saying that, you know, in accountability, it, when we're looking at an accountability model next to, say, an org chart, in a traditional org chart, you have, you start at the top, you have like the board to the superintendent, to administrators, principals, teachers, then students at the bottom of that org chart. And what that does is it puts all of the pressure on the students, and it's like, obviously, it is about how our students are performing, and we know that, but what we need to do is shift and flip that chart so that our accountability is to our students. It starts with the students and the students' needs. So that was the framework that he presented to us. What do you need to serve those to whom you are accountable? Student need is the basis for everything, and then we adapt as the adults in the system. Our actions should always focus on the needs of the students. Here, he used this, it's a picture of a boat, so a ship, and he's saying that, you know, in a true accountability system, it's not so much about what we did yesterday and how it was. Just like on a ship, you have the person who's looking out, looking at what's coming, you know, looking out for the icebergs and the pirates, he said, trying to figure out how we can avoid those barriers and those things that could be a hindrance to moving forward and progressing successfully. But it's about the future. It is about what we need to do and put in place so that we can have that future-oriented direction, excuse me, a system response, not about how well we did yesterday, but making great decisions for tomorrow. Avoid those icebergs and pirates. Does the evidence we have available suggest that the decisions we made are moving us forward in the right direction? The board in this system becomes the most important listeners of school board, and I feel that, we feel, that is exactly what we have in you, in our school board, and we are so appreciative of that because you are listeners, and you take action as needed, and you support. We have that, those high expectations met by high support, and that is true empowerment. So that empowers our teachers, our principals, our district administrators to really act on behalf of our students, to make those decisions that are best for the kids in San Angelo ISD. In a true accountability system, and I'll just go through these, you know, it's a decision-making engine for making the meaningful decisions, not just another report. Starts with what do we want to accomplish, not what do we want to measure. And is always to benefit students. Celebrates all the ways students are smart and prepares all students for an uncertain future rather than a past that will never again exist. Offers a complete and truthful accounting, which cannot be reduced to a single mark or a grade, to just a test on that one day, but that we are looking more holistically at what our community wants us to be accountable for, and that we are taking into consideration how we're preparing our students for that uncertain future that we know that they're facing. Establishes the social contract between a school and the community it serves, asking for what and to whom are we accountable. It means being accountable for the capacities, requirements, principles, and infrastructure necessary to create and sustain a successful learning organization. So moving away from just the bureaucratic systems that very traditionally have driven most of school organizations over the years, to a true learning organization where everyone is a learner, and we truly put the students first, and we want to benefit our students in their learning and listen to the priorities in our community of what our community wants for our students and for our district's San Angelo ISD. So we'll be updating this regularly. John Tanner will be coming and working with our district really every month for a while until we start to develop this framework for the community-based accountability that we will be embarking on in San Angelo. We have February dates for our district leadership team, which we will have a development, develop a communications matrix, and so everyone is constantly on message, has the same message. He calls it developing like an elevator speech, so that when you're asked about it, you know exactly what it is that, how to respond, what is it, what are we talking about? So we have those answers and can provide the information that we need to be able to provide to our community and to our public, to our parents, and to students as well. We'll develop a success team made up of district and campus administrators, teachers, instructional coaches, building a district framework based on prioritized pillars of need that our Community-Based Accountability Advisory Council has identified as areas that we want to focus on for our students. Infrastructure teams will meet once a month with John Tanner to develop the framework for the San Angelo ISD Community-Based Accountability System, with the overarching goal as CBS, CBAS pilot to be developed as part of our work with the Texas Association of School Administrators Public Accountability Consortium. So all of this work, moving forward as leaders in the state in this work, very encouraged by the time that we had with him this past week and the work that he did with us on that day on Wednesday. He worked with our district team most of the day on Wednesday as well. And so I know some of you were able to interact with him, and we're just eager to learn more and move forward and continue to bring updates about our academic progress and our development of our community-based accountability system in San Angelo. So, oh, and one thing that I did not have on here, we will be having a board workshop, and we will talk more about that, too. It's March the 18th, and we will share with you the information regarding that, and we are going to have John Tanner here facilitating a board workshop through which he will take you through the frameworks that we are working on developing, the communications matrix, and provide information, responses, answers to any of the questions that you may have between now and then. So thank you again for your support as we move forward with this very, very important work that is so aligned with our learner profile. This is something that he was so impressed with because he said, you know, this is what's reflective. This is with over 200 people who helped to participate in the development of a future-ready learner profile in San Angelo ISD, and this is what it's all about. This is how we know that we're moving forward and measuring the success of our students by helping them to be ready for their futures. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Any questions from anyone? I know several of us had the opportunity to be there, and if anybody has any interest in coming in the future, I would certainly, Dr. Tanner's written a number of books, so if you really want to get into the weeds, then I would encourage you to read those books. What's one of his books, Janet, that...
Oh, gosh, my mind is just going to...
You have it in your...
Yes. Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, thank you. Pitfalls of Reform.
Pitfalls of Reform, yes. Sorry. Gosh.
I saw it the other day.
I have it on my desk.
She had it like tabbed like 3,000 times.
I do, I do.
I thought maybe she knew the name of it.
He was impressed because when he said, because we're doing another book study, let's start with why Simon Sinek, and he said, "Oh, that's great." He said, "I bet nobody has my book right here." And I pulled it out of my backpack, and I said, "I take it back and forth with me every day." It is, so yes.
But most of our board teams had the opportunity to, at other educational opportunities, to hear Dr. Tanner speak, and he's a really impressive, a really impressive gentleman, and I think someone that is deeply concerned about the future of students, not only in Texas, but he works with districts all over the country. So we need to feel privileged that he's working with us, and I'm looking forward to our workshop that you mentioned in March. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I really didn't.
That's fine. I'll bring it next time.
Our next item on our agenda is item eight. For consent, do we have a motion to approve our consent items?
I move to approve our consent items.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve consent items A through E. Item A is to consider 2019 trustee election. This is for single-member District 5, single-member District 6, and the at-large position on the school board. Item B is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel. Those were provided by Mr. Kimball. They're part of our board packet this evening. Item C is to consider bid number 18-031 for miscellaneous supplies. Item D is to consider bid number 18-032 for curriculum and instructional materials, and item E is to consider bid number 18-033 for the purchase of new vehicles. Do we have any comments or questions, or anyone who would like to pull any of those items from our consent agenda? Do we have any public comment concerning these consent items? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our 2017, 2018 audit report, and Dr. Bright's going to help us with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Webb and let him quickly highlight what you have in your hands tonight, and I think you'll be pleased with the results.
President Lehman, other members of the board, and other members of the administration who are here. What you have this evening, thankfully, is the comprehensive annual financial report for the San Angelo Independent School District for the year ended August 31, 2018. There are four sections in that report. There's an introductory section that's primarily district information. We don't audit that. The financial section, which includes most of the financial statements, footnotes, and supplementary statements and schedules. The statistical section, which is also not audited, and then a single audit section. I'm going to spend just a little time with you on the governmental statements. If you'll go, please, to page 35.
Mr. Webb, if you don't mind, I was going to say there's some extra copies over on the desk if someone in the audience didn't get one of those and would like to pick one up. Go ahead, Mr. Webb. Go ahead, Mr. Webb.
I'm going to hit the column that's labeled governmental activities. Well, you can see the cash at the end of the year, a little over 22 million, almost 23 million. Current investments, 15 million. Delinquent property taxes, $1,769, and then allowance for uncollectible taxes. Due from other governments, that $5,267,737. If you'll just kind of hold your place and go to page 60. On the, on, actually, yes, on page 60 at the top, you'll see that you, that $5 million federal grants is $897,478. State entitlements, $4,024,484. Council Valley Council of Governments, $345,775. So that makes up that $5 million two that's shown there. Then you've got some accrued interest, other receivables, inventories, of course, that'd be food service, prepayments. Then you've got capital assets, land, buildings, furniture and equipment, instruction in progress. Again, if you'll just hold your place and go to 61 and 62, that's, we were just at 60. At the bottom of 61, you'll see the detail, your beginning balance for the year, the additions during the year, reclassifications, that $11 million, which is construction in progress, it was finished and put in with buildings and improvements, and then the ending balance, which is shown nets to that $203,188,840. Now, if you'll go back again to page 35, you've got some long-term investments, a little over $10 million. Your deferred outflows of resources, and we're not going to look at those, but they're on page 63, 75, 70. We can spend a lot of time on those pension liabilities, but at your leisure, you may want to look at those in the future. Under liabilities, your payables, $1,578,958. You've got some interest payable, payroll deductions and withholdings, accrued wages payable, a little over $4 million. Due to other governments, due to student governments, student groups, accrued expenses, $309,000. The detail on that's on, we're not going there, but on page 71, the unearned revenue, $1,489,174. The detail for that's on page 63. Then you have some non-current liabilities. Due within one year, $4.700, $4,700,000. That's on page 63. Due in more than one year, $109,976,743. Net pension liability, the district share, a little over $22 million, and the other pension liability, $43,259,984. And again, information about those, there's two or three pages here, page 63, 65, 69, and 73. That gets pretty involved and I'm not going to take the time this evening to go over all that because I don't think it's necessary, but if you'd like to look at it, those pages, at your leisure, you can go look at those. Then we have deferred inflows of resources, $18,900, $18,95,733. That's on page 77. And deferred resources, $3,907,008. That's on page 70. Now, in the net position section, you've got something that hasn't been on your statement of net position ever before, and that's that unrestricted, you've got a deficit of $37,933,567. Now, I want you to look at, just to illustrate, go to page 109, but hold your place here. There's a comparative summary of that net position for the past 10 years, and if you look at that unrestricted amount, $37 million, and look back for eight, nine, 10 years, you'll see you've never come close to that before and neither have a lot of other districts in the state of Texas. That deficit is a result of implementing GASB-75, and I'll be talking to you about that when we get over to the revenue statement and tell you why, what it's about a little bit. And now, it's not to be, that deficit is not to alarm you, but it's just to show you that it's never happened, but you're not the only district in the state of Texas that's ended up with a deficit because of this GASB-75. Okay, then if you'll, let's flip a page. 36 and 37, we're going to look at the statement of activities. This statement's presented a little bit differently than what you're accustomed to seeing. You'll see on the left, we start with a column labeled expenses. Gives you the amount total, there's $102,758,971. Then the next is the charges for services. Instruction, there's $609,000, that's tuition and some other charges, that $1,006, next to food service, that's of course what food service charged for the meals. So there's $3,176,353 there. The next column, operating grants and contributions. You'll notice that some of those are debits. Anything that's got brackets, a debit, that's not income. Why are those debits? Again, we're GASB-75 and we're, I want to get to that in a minute, but that's why you have those, some of those revenue items that have a debit balance in them. The idea is to take the total expenses and deduct from those total expenses, the charges for services, these grants, and end up with a column there of the expenses, the net expenses that weren't covered by charges for services and an operating grant the district may have received. So that $102 million dropped down to $95,850. And right under that, we're going to look at the revenue that you receive to fund, to pay for those net expenses. That's, this is the way this statement's supposed to be presented, it's just different than what you normally see. The first item we have there, $51,338,223, that's property taxes, levied for general purposes. Right under it, property taxes levied for debt service, $8.3 million. Grants and contributions not restricted, a little over $52 million. You had investment earnings of $782,000. Miscellaneous, local, and intermediate revenue, $781,210, and we've got an extra ordinary item, a debit, $334,000, and transfer in and out, that $5,300. So that $113,841,793 covers the expenses of $95,852,000. Leaves you net change, a net increase in net position of $17,991,593. Then the beginning net position was $126,374,001. Then we have $75,856,120. That is the total accrual that the district has to make for prior years, does not include the current year, '17 and '18, as a result of statement GASB-75. And if you would, let, hold your place, but let's go to page 74. At the bottom of page 74, you have a prior period adjustment. And if you'll permit, I'm just going to take a read part of that for you. During fiscal year 2018, the district adopted GASB statement number 75 for accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. With GASB-75, the district must assume their proportionate share of the net OPEB liability of the teacher retirement system of Texas. Adoption of GASB-75 required a prior period adjustment to report the effect of GASB-75 The prior period adjustment totaled at $75,856,120, which resulted in a restatement of beginning net position of $50,517,881. Dallas, the Dallas ISD, just, I think it'll make you feel a lot better, they had a, their, their restatement was a little over $1 billion. Austin ISD was a little over a half billion. And in fact, Austin booked that one-half billion there, threw them into a negative net position. I don't know that too many school, very many school districts in Texas will have that, but, but they did as a result of, of this restatement. So that's what GASB-75 is. I'm not going to read the rest of that, but that's what it is. And once you've got that $75 billion in there for prior years, you just go forward and then each year, pick up your share of those expenses. Last week, when I was here and going over the governmental, and talking about, I thought you had a, you did have a good, a good, a good year last year. Somebody was watching your, not only your pennies, dollars, but your pennies, and you ended up covering all your expenses and some capital outlay and increased the fund balance for those governmental funds by a little over $2 million, which brought it up to $37 million. And Dr. Deathloff, at the time, I was trying to be complimentary, but he was concerned that someone might think, well, the school district's got too much fund balance. But you know, I had forgotten. But you have a policy on what your uncommitted fund balance is. I want to, well, I didn't give, I didn't, I gave you all those other page numbers and I didn't, oh, yes, it is, on page 52. If you'll come down, if you're there at 72, you'll come down to where it says unassigned amounts that are available for any purpose, of which that $37 million, of course, was available for any purpose. But here is your policy. Per the district's adopted, adopted board policy, it's a local policy, the minimum fund level for the unassigned fund balance shall be 20% to a maximum of 25% of the current budget of the general and debt service funds. Just to give you an idea, that means on, on your, say, your general fund with approximately, oh, $116 million budget, which is, you run that from year to year, the 20% would be a little over $2 million, 25% would be a little over $2.9 million. So you can have plenty of fund balance. You're a long way from being where your policy says you can be, but I thought I might just call, since Dr. Deathloff, Deathloff brought that up, I wanted to call that to your attention, that there is a local policy. I had forgotten about it, but, but it's there. Okay, that's, that covers that. I went over with you, from, from here on, are the governmental statements that I tried to go over with you last week, and I don't want to spend time going back over those with you this evening. So what I want to do is to give you, again, that A-plus report. This is what I was saying was going to be, this report, receipt, had as an A-plus report, and that's on page 141. We looked at it last week, but let's look at it again. The auditor's report, of course, is unmodified and I've told you many times, that's as good as it gets. That's what you want. Internal control over financial reporting, there were no material weaknesses identified. There were no significant deficiencies identified, and there was no non-compliance material to the financial statements noted. Under the federal awards section, again, there were no material weaknesses identified. There were no significant deficiencies identified, and there was no report issued on any compliance for any, any compliance problems for any major programs. Those major programs that were looked at were ESA, ESEA Title I Part A, ESEA Title I Part C, IDEA Part B, and formula in IDEA Part B's preschool. Then number two there, there were, there are no findings to report, and under the Fed program for findings and question cost, major federal awards program, there were no findings there either. And again, as far as I'm concerned, that's an A-plus report for this CAFR. And unless you all have some questions, I'll quit there.
Any questions for Mr. Webb? Mr. Parker?
I don't have any question. I just want the audience here and the audience on television to know, we received this report last Monday also with Mr. Webb and had a chance to ask him questions then. So I just want to thank you, Wiley and Richard, both of you, for your, and your staff for your efforts on this audit. And you might say this, because I, I know this was a transition period for us at SAISD because Hope, who'd helped you in the past, had retired. Who did you work with this year and did you have any problems with our staff in helping you with the audit?
Well, I neglected that too. Richard had asked, and the staff had asked, that I pass on to you. I'm pleased they were, again, working with your staff. Mr. Guerrero knew this year, working with him. I don't know how many invoices that they file, that they have to pull for us, how many other documents for compliance that they have to pull and then put back up. And the cooperation of your staff, I would pull my hair out if I had to. Those ladies back there that file all those invoices and they have to pull them out for us and then go back and refile them, but no complaints whatsoever. It's great, you have a great staff for us to work with and they all appreciate that very much, Max.
Thanks, Mr. Webb. Any other, Mr. Dindal?
Mr. Webb, thanks for that positive report. I know that we talk about financial transparency with our constituents and so you see no weaknesses in our procedures and our methods at this point. And if, if there was, would you please tell us if there's a way we can improve on that in the future?
Well, if we had any suggestions, we would have, we would have gotten with Dr. Bright and.
I figured you were going to say that, but thank you. Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Certainly in the past, you hadn't been bashful about doing that.
No, no, no.
So, and, and you know, that's what, that's what auditors are there for, you know, to make sure that, that the programs that they're auditing are, are run, you know, the way they're supposed to be run. So we, we thank y'all for, for this report and y'all's hard work and certainly Dr. Bright and his team. I know when the auditors show up in my office, it's, it's not the happiest day, the happiest day's when they leave, you know, and everything turns out good. So thank you for, for y'all's hard work and for working with the district for so many years. Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any other questions or comments from our board team? Okay, and we'll have some homework to do, and if anybody wants to, as I think Wiley mentioned last week, if anybody has any questions that they don't feel comfortable asking tonight, or they don't would prefer not to ask, or they don't know enough to ask, then you can go to his office and make an appointment. And I don't know if I've ever even made an appointment, just let them know you're going to be there, and they'll help you through those details.
Be glad to, and I know that Jaime will also, Dr. Bright will also be happy.
Right. So it's, it's, as Bill mentioned, we want to be as transparent as possible, and we want everybody to, to know that, you know, we recognize part of our responsibility is making certain that programs are run efficiently and effectively, and, and that our audit's clean. So thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move forward. Yeah, we do, we do. That's what I was getting to. So, we will need to approve our 2017, 2018 audit report. Do we have a motion to do so?
Mr. Lehman, I move for approval of the August 31st, 2018 annual financial report and the auditor's opinion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our 2017, 2000 audit report. Are there any further questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes.
Mr. Lehman, I'd like to thank y'all for the support and, and the work of the audit, and certainly thank Jaime for the hours he's put in. It's his first school district audit, and we've learned a lot along the way. Of course, his next, next task is, we have to submit this to TEA by Thursday. So, we've got a quick turnaround, but thank y'all for your support.
Jaime, are you okay? Jaime? Okay. Okay, there.
Thanks.
And I've got a letter that we need to sign and send forward, it looks like, so I'll make sure we do that this evening. Okay, our next item is to consider and approve our bill's accounts and financial statements for December of 2018. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a, and a second from Mr. Gallegos, and a kind of a motion from Mr. Hernandez. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team?
Again, Mr. Lehman, just in our effort at financial transparency, all the reports that we review every month can be found online. If you go to the district tab, there's, there's a sub-tab under there called Financial Transparency, and the reports, the same reports that we look at are online, basically, they're in their entirety, even down to the check, our checkbook, can be found online on that tab.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. Any other questions or comments concerning our bill's accounts and financial statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item's item 11, to consider early retirement notice of resignation incentive, and Mr. Kimball's going to review that for us.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Thanks for considering this, this evening. This comes to you, it's come to you probably the last eight years, about this time of year. You have a chart coming around to your position there. Same thing, it's on the screen, but I thought it might be easier to see if you had it right in front of you. In an effort to anticipate our staffing needs for the 2019, 2020 school year, we are again asking for you to consider and approve an early resignation incentive for contract employees to provide notice of end-of-the-year resignation. Our early resignation notice incentive has been very successful the last eight years, as you can see by the chart in front of you, the one that we've got here on the screen. This table shows the history of the early resignation incentive and the number of employees that have received that incentive. So last spring, you'll look, for example, 67 employees received that incentive by providing an early notice of their end-of-the-year resignation. We had a total of 152 resignations for the year, and 67 of those qualified for the, the incentive. We would again like to offer a $500 incentive for end-of-the-year resignations received by 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 21st, 2019, and a one-time payment of $500 will be issued in the person's April paycheck. We believe that this allows us to get in front of the hiring process. There is a teacher shortage across the state of Texas, and the competition for our great candidates is, is significant as we go to job fairs and as we recruit. And so this gives us a chance to get a jump on that as, as early as possible by knowing those positions that are going to come open. I want to emphasize that we are not up here encouraging people to leave. By no means do we want our employees leaving. We're not encouraging them to, to leave or resign in any form or fashion, but there are those that know they're going to be moving, they may be, have a spouse that's in the military that's going to be reassigned for a variety of reasons. They may know already, or will know this spring, that they're going to be leaving the district at the end of the year. And if they give us that notice by March 21st, then we would give them that incentive for letting us know early. So it's not intended to entice people to leave, it's just merely an incentive that if you already know that you're going to be leaving us, to, to let us know early. This allows our campuses to get in front of the, the hiring. A lot of times, we try to start hiring for our teaching positions for next spring as early in April as possible. Job fairs start pretty swiftly right after spring break, and that's kind of the, the crunch for when a lot of the hiring's done. So, this allows us to know those positions early in the process, and principals able to find the top candidates for our students in their classroom. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and we appreciate your support.
Thanks, Mr. Kimball. Do we have any questions from our board team? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the early notice resignation incentive as presented.
We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker. Do we have any further board comments or questions? Do we have any public comment?
Well, just, just one, I was, I was here last week, Matt, and you had all the, I guess they were, I guess student, I guess student teachers that we're going to be having for this coming, I guess this, this semester.
This spring, yes, sir.
How many did y'all have?
About 35.
Those are good, good number of them down there, and I was, ended up just coming to talk to Dr. Dethloff, ended up talking to a bunch of them, so. But it was good seeing them. A lot of them were, some of them, a lot of them were not from here, but they graduated from this area, and it was good seeing them. They were coming back home or trying to stay here.
Yeah, they're excited, for sure.
What excited me is that they want to stay here, so.
So you didn't do anything to run them off, Gerard?
No, I told them, talk to Matt about bonuses and all that. No. So, no, I welcomed them the best I could, and just, I just told them I was really happy to, that they were here, that they were, weren't going elsewhere, so.
Yeah, thanks. That's, and it's important, as Mr. Kimball mentioned earlier, we do have a shortage of teachers statewide, and I know a number of districts surrounding us are still looking for qualified teachers at this particular timeframe, as late in the years we, as we are. So, thank you for that presentation, and do we have any public comment concerning our, yes, ma'am, would you come forward, please, and, so we can make sure that we hear your comment, and it's on our telecast on our public access channel? Tell everybody who you are, if you don't mind.
I'm Susie Smith, and I was curious about, is it a new policy to, because I understood you to say that it was before summer that they got the, if they took the early retirement incentive, that they got the funds?
It's a resignation incentive, not a retirement incentive. So, I that resigns, it's pretty good for retirement. If they let us know by March 1st, can they get that incentive?
Okay. And the reason I ask was because in talking with the teacher, and it may have been before this policy was put in, but that that was held through the summer. And so that was why I was curious, was this a, a new policy to pay it prior, or?
So, the incentive, the incentive's always been offered in this timeframe. Headline.
So I think the question is, when is it actually paid? And, and current policy, our current, our current, not policy, but our current incentive, it would be paid April 23rd. So, I don't know what we've done historically, but current, this current incentive will be paid April 23rd.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you for your question. Hopefully, that's clear, and, so they have to notify us prior to March 21st, and if they do that, then they will receive their incentive as part of their compensation and paid on April 23rd. Okay? Yes, ma'am, would you come forward, please? And let us know who you are.
Yes, Ginger Moore. My question is, what did we do in 2013 that was so right that we didn't lose as many teachers?
Wow, that's a good question.
Do we have any stats on that as to why? Maybe we could take a look at it and see if we can improve? I don't know.
2013, I think, is when they cut the education fund, wasn't it, Jeff? Was it 2013 when they, was that 2010? Okay, I thought it was 2013.
What they were doing, it's obviously correct, so.
Right, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
My suspicion was that Dr. Dethloff was in charge of human resources at that time, and the only change has been me, so.
Yeah, we, just for your information, as employees resign, they go through an exiting process from the district where they learn about benefits and those kinds of things. And part of that is an exit survey, that they give us some, some information about why they're choosing to leave and what they think we can improve on. And so, that'll be something that I will be sharing with you when we do our human resources update later in, in March. But we do collect that information as well, so I can go back and dig that up.
Yes, I'm, I agree with her comments. It's like half as many from all our other years. I thought that was curious, too. So if you find out if there was anything in particular that was going on that particular year, I agree, that would be something we would want to try to duplicate, or it may have just been there was something more that we've forgotten about. So if you can check that out, I'd appreciate it, too.
And really, Mr. Kimball, as part of that, we might look at some comparisons from other districts and see, you know, maybe what percentage of their, this is just teaching staff, right? It's not any other.
Yes, sir.
So, and, you know, basically, we've got about 15% of our teachers' turnover or resign on an annual basis, and so it'd be interesting to know how that compares to other districts. When, when we go to conferences and seminars, I think that number's not surprising, but to Ms. Moore's comment, if there's something we can do to reduce that number, that'd be great for all of us. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve? Okay, thank you. All right. If we do, then I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Kimball. Thanks for public comments as well. Our next item is to consider bid number 18-034. This is for a controlled entry at Lincoln Middle School, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Tonight, I bring to you bid 18-34 for the construction of a controlled entry at Lincoln Middle School. During the evaluation of our campuses for our security upgrades, it was decided that we would need to change the Lincoln Middle School entry to obtain the level of security desired. This proposal is for the construction of a 900-square-foot controlled main lobby and a, and the renovation of a 2,400-square-foot existing office space in the admin area. During the bid process, we had 10 general contractors request plans, which is a very high number. We received five competitive bids on this project. A committee, using our scoring criteria, scored the responses. Henthorn Commercial Construction of Lubbock was the bidder with the highest score and a proposed cost of $584,400. That includes alternate one of porcelain tile and a $50,000 contingency. Additional costs will include $50,000 in architect fees. The administration recommends contracting with Henthorn Construction of Lubbock for the construction of a controlled vestibule at Lincoln Middle School for $584,400.
Is it 584 or 581?
584,000.
Okay, because our board packet material says 581. So it's 584,400.
Oh, I'm sorry, 581,400. You're correct. I typed it wrong in my.
And you said this includes, this, this 580, that also includes architects' fees and all that?
It does not include the architect's fees. It does include the contingency and the alternate one.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Henry. Any other questions or comments concerning this bid 18034 for a controlled entry at Lincoln Middle School? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll make that motion. I, I move that we approve Henthorn Commercial Construction of Lubbock for the construction of a controlled vestibule entry at Lincoln Middle School for a cost of 581, $581,400. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Dindal. So we have a motion and a second. Is there other comments from our board team, questions? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Would you come forward and please introduce yourself? Thank you for being here.
This is just a quick question, but it's, oh, I'm Alexandria Sykes. Is 50,000 like a typical architectural request? Like, I don't know, I'm not in construction, but it's really high.
Mr. Henry, you want to help us with that? I think usually an architect's fee's somewhere between 7 and 10%.
Correct. It's usually between 7 and 10% where they can do an adjusted flat fee. His is a flat fee of 50,000. It was in line with what our estimate was. We were figuring it was about 500,000. We're actually getting a better deal, because normally he charges 10%.
And who's the architect? Kenny Frankie?
Kenny Frankie.
Yeah, yeah. That is a good question, though, because somehow, sometime it just depends on the size of the project. I mean, if we're doing $44 million worth of construction at Central High School, which we did a number of years ago as part of our previous bond, then that, the architecture fees would not, you wouldn't expect that type of fee. But sometimes, the smaller the project, the more percentage that you pay. And that's my experience, and Mr. Dindal might be able to help us with a little bit of that, because he's in that business, you know, so. But thank you for your question. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our, just our announcements. We have our finance and pre-agenda board workshop on February 11th of 2019, and we have our regular board meeting on February 19th of 2019. And as a reminder, our workshop with John Tanner is scheduled for March 18th. Yeah, yeah. So we might put that on our agenda as well.
I'm sorry. Right away. Yes, I didn't have a time.
We're thinking, we need to get your opinion on that.
Okay.
Just making sure to miss it.
Okay. So March 18th, and give?
That's the date of our pre-agenda.
Okay.
I had a suggestion, but I think he was going to talk about that.
Okay. All right, well, let's, why don't y'all just give us an idea of when that's going to be? I think, you know, Doc, when John was here, Mr. Tanner was here previously, he, I know he left here about 7 o'clock to drive to Houston, you know, so that, I don't know that he would look forward to anything other than perhaps before our pre-agenda. Maybe we can meet before that, so.
He will be working in the district the next day as well.
Okay, so that's good. Okay, well, just give us an idea of when that is, and we can get I think, you know, Doc, when John was here, Mr. Tanner was here previously, he, I know he left here about 7 o'clock to drive to Houston, you know, so that, I don't know that he would look forward to anything other than perhaps before our pre-agenda. Maybe we can meet before that, so.
He'll be working in the district the next day as well.
Okay, so that's good. Okay, well, just give us an idea of when that is, and we can get it on our calendars. Any other board business or any items that we need to place on a future agenda? If not, and here are no objections, we'll stand adjourned.